I apologize for starting a little bit late. Welcome to MAU's High Schools Meeting on October 18th is 6:06. Our first item is public comments, or are there any items for public comment? We're going to move on to finance. I don't see a treasurer's report of any posted yet, so I don't think we need to accept that. I will move on to operations, which is none, and we'll move to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
We could do all at once. I know data collection, so I was going to do one. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Any discussion?
Yes. Under warrants, if this is the right place.
Yes, this is the right place.
There's a check 79834 for $9,000 for T-shirts. I was curious what that is.
Okay, so that's probably something that we'll ask the debt have.
What was the check number again?
Seven nine.
Seven nine eight three four.
I will take back to that answer. That's what I would have tonight.
Are there any, is there any other discussion?
On resignations.
Okay.
We've lost our A D. What's the progress on where we at on February or November or what?
I'll address that now, or I was just doing my superintendent's report, but I can answer it now. We had a round of interviews this afternoon. I am trying to, I have a screening committee together to make recommendation to me. I anticipate, I'm trying to fast track, that I'm going to ask the chair for a special meeting next Wednesday prior to the S U meeting, where I will make a recommendation to the board for an interim athletic director.
Interim, yeah.
Okay, so it's probably important to note that we can do that via Zoom.
By Zoom, you will not, there'll be a Zoom component to it like all our meetings. I recommend that you, you don't have to come here. So the 5:30 is the S U meeting, so I don't know, 5 o'clock would work for everybody on next Wednesday.
Is there, what, what is interim meeting? Is it, are, is that, are you filling the position for the remainder of the year or are we committing to someone?
For the remainder of the year? No, we would make the decision later on in the year on whether this is going to be permanent or you want to reopen it based on what we're observing. But right now, it's interim for the rest of this year. There is certainly the possibility that it could become permanent or we could make the decision that we will re-advertize it. Just trying to get it filled as quickly as possible now. Confident we have multiple candidates, highly qualified candidates that I will make the recommendation to the full board. The screen committee included two board members, two administrators, and two staff members.
Okay, so you're not finding that using the term interim is stopping people from wanting to commit to us?
No, not from the number of applicants that we have now.
Kind of related to that, where are we at with the girls' basketball coach?
Can I pause it for one second just because I feel like that might be more appropriate under.
Trying to quickly answer that right now. That's one of the reasons I am trying to fast track the hiring of an A D. I feel that they should have some involvement in that decision.
Soccer season is almost over. Basketball is starting shortly, so.
I understand when the season is, and I'm trying to move this as quickly as I can.
So it sounds like we will prioritize showing up next Wednesday at 5:00. Okay, any other comments or questions? I have a motion to approve the consent agenda. All right, all in favor? Sorry, all in favor? All opposed? Is it Scott and Wendy on?
I don't see Wendy.
Okay, just Scott.
I'm in favor.
We will move on to the superintendent's report.
First part of my report is done by our Assistant Superintendent Laura Bedrow and Director of Student Sports Services, Dr. Kate Abbott. It's the Recovery Bill of Three on Academic Achievement. This is an annual report. So they're going to give a presentation. I'm going to ask that we hold questions at the end just so we keep the flow of the report going. And then I'll be happy to answer the questions once it is out of the board.
Hello, everybody. Welcome. We're so nice, so glad to see all of you. We are required as part of, oh, press questions. We are required as part of our ESTER funding and recovery to present to you here around the work link to social, emotional, and behavior plans that we've put in place. As a reminder, the recovery plan was developed over three years ago now with community stakeholders and members of the school community. And then we budgeted our ESTER money, our federal money, based on the decisions of that committee, and I can't believe it's been that long. This is the final year because the money runs out in September of 2024. And so we're here to just report out where we are at this moment in time. So I'm going to share this now. So this presentation is specific to MAU and for the MAU board. We have also presented to the SVU E S P board and the Arlington Board and will finish next week at the S V S U. So as a reminder, initially, we want to remind you of the acronyms that are related to this work. And the only additions are the last two, and they are linked to our partnership with United Counseling Service. So F E S stands for Family Emergency Services, and P U C stands for the Psychiatric Urgent Care for Kids. We do have a recovery link on the S V S U website with a feedback button that is always welcome and checked. The information we're presenting tonight are linked to the Vermont Transferable Skills, Clear and Effective Communication, Creative and Practical Problem Solving, Informed and Integrated Thinking, Responsible and Involved Citizenship, and Self-Direction.
So this next page talks about a screening pool we use three times a year for all of our learners called the S S R S I E. It's a screening scale for internalizing and externalizing behaviors. Internalizing behaviors are things like anxiety, depression, withdrawal, things that are, you know, impact students' performance in school and that are indicators of mental health. In the fall of 2022, we saw 18% at high risk. And in the spring of 2023, our high-risk internalizing was 13%. But we do notice that there's a reduction in students at high risk of internalizing types of behaviors over the course of the year. But we also see a gradual increase from low risk to moderate risk over the course of this 22, 23 school year for internalizing behaviors. Externalizing behaviors are things like acting out behaviors, either physical or verbal or physical. And we see a small but persistent population of high-risk students for externalizing behaviors. And we see the same trend for low risk, to slightly higher percentage, slightly higher percentage of low to moderate risk of externally, externalizing behaviors over the course of the year. So it's slow increase, slight increase for that.
And over the last three years, we've presented you with the S V S U homeless intake count. So this is not specific to MAU. It's our entire district. So what I really want to point out is the three-year trend. So the first year I reported out to you between the intakes that I completed as the homeless liaison between August and December. And then you can see what I reported out to you last year between the window of August and November. And the data that you're seeing this time is between August and October. So I just want you to pause for a minute. Okay, so that's how many intakes have been completed so far.
Can I ask a question about that?
So based on the data, then what our leadership team does is we still reference the wellness plan that was created by our educational community three years ago. We're, Dr. Abbott and I are only going to touch upon things that have, that are changed and/or updated. So the next piece of information is around the tools that are used district-wide to teach Tier One instruction because we do know the state of Vermont, you really need to do direct instruction of academics, behavior, and social-emotional skills. So what's new this year, I moved to the middle and high school level, is the high school has landed on a primary resource called School Connect. And I do want to point out with ESTER money, and Mr. Payne had a wonderful team that came together to vet and choose that. And Arlington Memorial High School is also using the same tool as well. If you continue on, it's also important that we're always providing professional learning to our teachers and staff that are supporting students. And so you can see that we continue with the thread of professional learning linked to trauma, which is funded through our ESTER grant, Restorative Practices, which is funded through our ESTER grant. And you'll notice under Restorative Practices this year, our administrative team is in the middle of a five-part training linked to Restorative Practices. We are using our ESTER money to bring in John Kida, who is a state presenter on Restorative Practices, to work with our administrative team. And then we continue on with annual training and non-prisis intervention training, C P I, which is funded through our T E R grant. Zones Regulation is funded through our ESTER grant. And then we continue to see a really big uptick in the amount of people asking for trauma drumming. Trauma drumming now has been offered for three years, and we've expanded based on the requests from the field. We have teachers now requesting this training that are using it individually with students. So it's a tool that you can put in your toolbox. So it can be done with classes, and it can be done with individual students.
So on the next page are tiers three and tier three social-emotional behavioral interventions. New for our community this year is what's called is offering for our community partner, our designated agency UCS. It's called the I O P, the intensive outpatient programming. And so this is a program that allows our children that have significant needs to receive treatment in our community without having to go to a hospital placement. And that is a new service offered this year by our community partner UCS. And you'll see on our, the rest of our, most of our tier three are in place since last year, so continuing those supports. And tier four, we had to make a couple adjustments this year with our tier four interventions. These are only interventions accessible to learners that have I E P services. So our ideals program at the elementary school moved locations. So we moved from Molly Stark over to Mindnet School. As a result of the next box down, which is our middle and setup for children, we've seen an increased need for autism-based programming for our learners coming into the elementary schools. Those learners have been filtering up and into our middle and high schools. We added a high school classroom last year. And now we have added one additional elementary classroom this year and may need to also add a second elementary classroom next year based on the incoming needs.
And finally, we highlighted for you the last couple of years, the staffing patterns to support social, emotional, and behavior supports in each building. And so what you see is a snapshot in each building. And again, I want to draw your attention to the funding sources as it is budget season. And we do know that some of these grants are expiring. So this is the time that we're thinking about, you know, where we're building intercapacity. But you can again see the landscape of the resources that are available to school, school teams to help support. What I do want to draw your attention to is the additional supports. The first one in particular is we need to make sure that we have, and again, we never knew we needed them, coaches to support the implementation of social, emotional behavior, teacher kits and training. And so we were able through our Title IV grant to add another coach for behavior, social, emotional learning. And Jessa Orway, who's been with us now for many years, will soon have someone, a partner in this work at Tier One. And then the second, I'd like to thank Crystal Wire and Tim Payne in partnership with the Center for Restorative Justice for partnering. For, we are contracting with them for a full-time restorative case manager, which this year is funded through Title IV, and that person is in place. Am I correct? Yes.
Right on at the school.
Awesome. So I just wanted to highlight. So again, our goal tonight was just again, we are required every year to come and provide this update, especially as the funding is winding down. We want to hope that you pay attention to the things that we've used to invest our money and be very happy to answer.
Any questions?
I have a question. The number, if I watch the select board, the number throwing out about students, children who are unhoused has been 97, close to 100. That the Bennington County Coalition for the Homeless is using it as their metric. So what happened to that?
So let me explain. So this is, what this is called, this is an intake. So this is an S V S U intake. So schools are required to have a homeless liaison, and that's, that's me, that's my designation. And so our, my job and our job as a school is to provide resources to help a student to be successful in school. So this represents either families, parent, guardian, or it could be a student that reaches out to me to say, I would like to see if I qualify for McKinney-Vento protections, which is the school-level protections. So this is the number that's reached out for support during school day. So that, what you're seeing, what, I think it's probably Chloe presented, yes. Again, is a much larger, great snapshot of what's happening in our, in our community. If you know, I was, if you know of any families or unaccompanied students that are on their own or experiencing housing or homeless issues, they can reach out to me. I get a lot of people in this room that I spend a lot of time with that we set the families and students and see if they can qualify. So I can do a quick intake to see if they qualify. And then we use, we have a pocket of title money that we can use, and I can help with, I can help with anything that will help them be, to be successful in school. Sometimes it's clothing. Sometimes we help them with toiletries. I can help them with sneakers for gym class and snows if they need to walk to, boots if they need to walk to school. We've done hotspots for high school students. Backpacks, transportation, sometimes to get them where they need to be. Tutoring, I can pay for tutoring. So always think the lenses, anything that will help them to be successful in school. And I am super dependent on our community partners and, and the staff that we have in school because it's all hands on deck.
Any other questions on this side of the presentation? I want to thank you for your work on this and, and for your passion for dealing with our students that impacted under that. It's nice and communicative. So I know that. Thank you, Dr. Abbott, too. The previous meeting, there were a lot of questions about H H B, hazing, harassment, bullying, or our policies, and were they adequate? So one of the suggestions that I made is why don't we have our administration present to the board how they deal with H H B complaints or incidents at their school before we begin any discussion on how things may change or need to be changed. So, Tim or Chris, who's going first?
I can start this off, and I think that in both of our.
If he's ready.
Yeah, in both of our conversations, I invited one of my associate principals, Mr. Colley Lee, here as he is the administrator in the building that oversees, you know, student life, discipline, and school safety. So this is definitely a conversation that, you know, he's heavily part of. He's heavily part of, you know, overseeing the procedures and the implementation of the procedures in the building. So I thought it would be very relevant to have him here with us. And so he has put together, per Mr. Colke's request, like we've talked about, we've put together a brief presentation. I should say brief, we'll see how long it, we'll see how long it is going to be.
We'll see if we get it loaded.
Yeah, we'll see if it's loaded.
Or it's brief. It's going to be less than a minute.
So what, what you're going to see, though, that he's, that he's going to walk us through is a very, you know, quick look at our, our policy as a school district, our H H B, hazing, harassment, and bullying policy. And then I think more importantly, from what the, because I know the board is pretty familiar with the policies. So then moving into, you know, what, you know, when we have a case, you know, investigation that needs to be done around hazing, harassment, or bullying, what does that look like from the beginning of that? And so that's part of it. And then we have, yeah, so some other data about, for the middle school specifically, around, you know, how many, how many cases from the beginning of the year till now we've looked into, investigated, what, how many were substantiated, and so on and so forth. Then we can open it up to questions. We can answer those for you guys. How about we look at the first one? Almost there?
Yes.
I want that box is up there. That's how awesome. I've never seen that screen before. I'm afraid. Welcome, Leon, our boss. Mills from January to January. I mean, it has.
Who do we play and how did it come out?
Mr. Payne, are you using any technology in your report? Why don't we have Mr. Payne go first while we work behind the scenes to see if we can get this.
Actually, I think he said this.
I'm speaking for both because I'm talking about the whole.
I think the principal reports.
Oh, you want to.
I was waiting. I was.
I knew you were coordinated. I didn't know you had merged it that completely.
Yeah, we, we are. Yep, we're.
You're following the same policies and using the same procedure, so.
And actually, Mr. Lee and Jeremy Neal, who is in a similar role at the high school, collaborated.
How many have I talked about a few of the things in my report while we're doing the tech? Are you not ready?
No, I'm sure.
So a couple of things that I wanted to, one, I'll just repeat what, what was at the beginning of the meeting. I am going to ask the chair for a special meeting at 5 o'clock on Wednesday, 10:25, where I hope to have a recommendation for an interim athletic director. And on Monday, the 23rd, at 4:30, we begin negotiations with the, the associations. I say associations, is the Teachers Association, the Support Staff Association merge this summer into one union. So they're, and we're doing them concurrently, the negotiations. So there won't be two sets of negotiations, which is a first. The other thing, I have a handout for you. This is a, a project that, and Scott is, there, I don't have it electronically, Scott, but you'll get it next week at the S U meeting. This is a project that we've been working on. This is a snapshot or a fast facts of the S U about the impact that the S U has. Couple of highlights I'll point out to you. I'm often asked, how big is your budget? When I'll ask Renee that, and they will say to me, well, which budget are you talking about? The combined budgets of all the districts in the S V S U is $85 million. But our annual operating cost is $94 million. We're spending $94 million a year. The difference is 8.7 million in annual grants, like our Title I grants and federal grants. That doesn't include the $28 million that was awarded in one-time COVID-related grants. So think of the, the work level and, well, that's on our finance department, that type of operating. The S V S U Finance Office handles 5,000 purchase orders every year. Human resources, the total, you know, I've asked, I've been asked before, well, how many people work in the S U? And I'll get an answer back like, well, do you want to know the number of how many people are here or how many positions we have? Because we always have so many open positions, right? So this is the best number I can, when you're, when you're telling people, I need to put this down on a document that we're going to hand out. So 976 employees. This includes 764 full-time employees, 48 part-time employees, 164 per diem. The bi-weekly payroll, payroll of all the districts in the S V S U is $1.6 million. And student services, you know, Dr. Abbott's here, this even, what? The stress on that department with 691 students are receiving services from student support. It's, it's, it's a monumental task. Our, how many meals the Abbott Group serves annually. Our enrollment is here, how many computers we own, how, 16 buildings owned by our district that need to be maintained. So this is our first attempt at it. As soon as we were done, I was already getting suggestions on like, why didn't you include this? I had the, our Director of Public, Cornea of Public Information, Katie West. I owe her a big thank you for her work on this and putting up with my constant revisions. As I would have an overnight thought, and I'd come in that next morning and, like, you know what? I think we should change this. And so finally, we just had to make the grab. It's timed, it's dated, because there will be other versions of this we go forward. But this is, feel free to share this. This is by 10th year is the superintendent here in the S U, I think. And even I, I've never seen this consolidated in one spot. It may say, like, wow, this is, this is a big operation. We tend to think of it in our own, in our own little schools and the cocoons of our schools and, and that perspective. And when we look at, you know, what this is, and Scott was part of the inspiration from this from one of the S U meetings about what, you know, answering some of those obvious questions. How many people work here? How many students are here? What is our budget? So if, if you're ready.
I'm ready.
I'm done.
All right. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what the high school and middle school do in regards to the policy for harassment, hazing, and bullying. You can locate the policy on this S V S U website under Policies and Procedures. You go to Students and you can hit, it's number 5004. So this is the basic information of why the district does this, what we do, how do we investigate, the definitions of, and all the things that we have to use in the school to help support kids for the, for the purposes of eliminating and stopping harassment and hazing that occurs. I'll just go through these with some quick definitions. So if you look at the website, you'll see bullying is defined as it's repeated over time, intended to ridicule, humiliate, or intimidate the student, and occurs during the school day, school bus, school functions, activities. They did add another aspect of it recently, which is because of the online stuff that was also going on. If something is occurring outside of school, not necessarily on school grounds, but outside of school, and it is impacting a student's access to their education in school, the school could take a look at that as well and see if it falls under the policy that you have. So I talked to you about the different definitions that you have, complacent, designated employees, and then the definition of what harassment means. And the quick gist is any overt acts that are done to somebody within what's called a protected class, which would be motivated by students, family members, actual or perceived race, creed, color, national origin, marital status, disability, sex, sexual orientation, or gender identity that has the purpose or effective of objectively and substantially undermining and detracting from or interfering with a student's educational performance or access to school resources. So again, if I'm saying something and it falls within one of those protected classes to a student, that can be considered harassment. Bullying is a little bit different because it doesn't fall under one of those protected classes. So if you're making fun of somebody's weight, clothes. weight, clothes, family, where they live, that type of stuff, hygiene, things of that nature, that would be considered bullying, acts that are intended to ridicule, humiliate, or intimidate. So there are varying differences. And then there's hazing, hazing is not a lot that we have at the middle school, because hazing gives more of like, sports activities and teams doing something that they prove to make somebody do something else or to bother somebody else, that kind of stuff, but it can occur.
And just ahead, and Mr. Lee, I know you touched on it, but that bullying component has to have the component of taking, being repeated over time. So it can't be an isolated incident, where then, that's one of the main differences that we talk to kids about a lot, whereas harassment can be an isolated incident, a one-time thing. Bullying has to have that element of repeated over time.
Still, my thunder, but you are one hundred percent correct, sir. I mean, that's why they have the different levels of what is considered bullying and what is harassment. And then it talks about, as you go through, you can see from the procedures, a reporting of complaints, how you handle those things, how the schools do those, how kids are able to, or parents or family members, or even teachers or staff, that says, how do they bring it forward, and what procedures do you follow in order to do an investigation and find out if it fits within one of those classifications of bullying, whether it's harassment, whether it's hazing. So it gives you a bunch of different ways that you can do that. We have all kinds of different ways, we have phone calls that you can do, meeting with teachers, there are designated employees in every building that do specific HHB investigations and reporting, but anybody in a staff in the building can be reported to. And then that person, whoever it is, whether it's staff, a para, even one of the cooks or the people who work at the cafeteria, can then bring it to an administrator or another designated employee and say, hey, this is what's going on, this is what the kid's reporting. And I'll talk a little bit and show you some of the paperwork that we have, and then talk about the next steps after you've determined whether it is bullying or harassment, the things that can occur with students. You have investigating, they talk about the initiation of investigating, again, that's somebody bringing the report to you. You have certain time limits and constraints on things that you have to look at and look into, and once you get that information, they usually run anywhere from the first twenty-four to forty-eight hours, now that, again, that is dependent upon, you get that information. You get it on Friday at two o'clock, makes it a little difficult to do it within twenty-four hours, so. But the idea is, it's as quickly as possible within that twenty-four hour period. And then the investigation itself should be something within five days to make a determination as to whether or not it qualifies for bullying or harassment or hazing. And again, depending on size, the severity, how many people you have to talk to, the investigation, it could go beyond that, but that's what's they're looking for. So there's completion of the investigation, the timing, who you report to. Always talking about making sure that the child, whoever it is that is reporting the bullying, they feel protected. So there's no, there are rules and regulations that we have as far as like retaliation, so that you don't get into more trouble because you're reporting that somebody's bullying you, and if somebody else continues to say, oh, you're a snitch, you're a tattletale, and they do more things, of course, there's more consequences that can come from that. They need to feel comfortable to be able to come in and have that conversation. The different scopes of response, again, I'll show you that when I show you the paperwork on what we do once the determination is done. You'll be able to see how we respond to it, and really, the many different ways that we have to try to help and support students. I think the main idea, when you're talking about bullying and harassment, is you want the behavior to stop, and you want education to occur. Consequences are going to come naturally for things that people say and do. The point for the bullying and harassment is to stop the behavior and to educate, so that it doesn't continue again. So we're talking a little bit about those things that we have. School access, couple of different things that you can do at the end, well, if people wanna take a look at it and review, it's a very long, a lot to it. Talks about confidentiality and record-keeping, that's one of the things that we make sure that we have as complete data records as we need in order to go back, so we can look at our students popping up more than once, are there kids that are doing this over time? The information that we have also flows from the middle schools and the high school. So if a kid, there are many offenses that we have at the high school that it doesn't follow then to the, or, excuse me, at the middle school that doesn't follow then to the high school. Some of bullying and harassment are those that do, so if a kid is on the bullying level at the middle school and they go to the high school, it's not just, oh, fresh start, move over again, they have that information, so they can say, no, we've had this conversation before, we've talked about harassment, we've talked about bullying. So they have that information, that is something that we'll follow as a reporting piece. So those are the policies that we have, and where you can locate these on the SVSU website. We do talk with all of the students at the beginning of the year, and the families, we let them know where it's located, we meet with all of the students the first couple of days of school, we talk about what the definitions of bullying are, what the definitions of harassment are, with how, the ways that they can report. We introduce them to the people in our building, that show, this is the person you can come talk to, you can talk to an administrator. We also have an HHB coordinator this year, which has been a tremendous help. And I think students are really accessing that person when they need to, and that person is great at investigating and looking to see whether those next steps really mean that it's bullying or harassment, based on the policies that we have and the definitions that we have. And of course, all of this stuff is available for parents and students, accessible online, and we make sure that they know that. Are there any questions on the policies part of it? Excellent, I may need your help on this case. So now what I wanna do is talk about, like, a student that actually comes forward and is gonna make a complaint of bullying or harassment, just because somebody is complaining this way, that way, or that's why the investigation piece has to occur. But there is a form that we have that we fill out, so the person sits down, the investigator we have, whether it's an administrator, whether it's the HHBs, or some of our counselors do investigations as well. But it's important to understand that only an administrator can make a decision as to whether something is bullying or harassment, and that's based off the information from the investigation. So a counselor can do the investigation, and my HHB coordinator can do the investigation, but they ultimately bring it to Chris, myself, or Jen to say, you know, here's all the information, does this qualify as bullying or harassment? We're looking for that form, yeah.
You don't wanna close out ours?
I would absolutely do that, and when I hit an X or something, I would be gone. I could scroll through that if it works.
There you go.
Yep. So then we have this form that we use with the students, so they sit down, and just so that you know what the process is. So a kid says, I'm being bothered by somebody, all right, come on and talk, let's see what's going on. So we're gonna take the information, we're gonna find out who they're talking to, the adult that's there, is the person who's reporting it a victim? Or seeing something, because we encourage all students, and we've had this happen a lot, where a kid will come in and say, look, I'm seeing this going on, these kids are bothering this kid, or these kids are saying this stuff about this kid, they can do a reported bullying. It doesn't necessarily have to come from who the victim is, a lot of times, the victims don't like to report it, because then they feel that it's just gonna people see it, so we encourage that.
We've had, sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
We've had situations where students are reluctant to sit down with us for whatever reason, and we've given these forms to families or parents, where they can fill it out and get it back into us, we've had teachers sit down and report something, so it's it's really something that, again, as Tony alluded to, that anybody, the idea is that all hands on decks for this work, anybody can help.
It's important to make sure that we get the form, we want kids to know, get it to us any way that we can, whether it's for a friend, whether it's for yourself, whether it's for a family, a family member who may call in and have that conversation, this is the starting point of what we look at. So we get all as much information as we can from it, identity of the alleged student offender, the date of the incident, and I know this is a very small space, but trust me when I tell you, there's a lot of notes to go with it, as far as like the detailed description of the conduct reported, so they'll talk about where, when, who, what, why, what was going on. Any student witnesses, this is also huge, if there's anybody around, any staff that may have been around. Initial actions taken, so they'll talk about, okay, so we start the investigation, I spoke with teachers, I spoke with other students. We reviewed video, video helps out a lot as well, we have a lot of cameras in the school system, forty-five throughout our middle school building, and those have been a tremendous help in determining and establishing whether potential bullying or harassment was happening. So use any of those forms that you can, including online stuff as well. It's with internet, they bring in, the phones come to me with, Mr. Lee, look what this person is texting, look what this person is posting, look at this video. I had a situation the other day with, you know, brought videos to us, there were clear signs of bullying of what was going on, what kids were saying. And it was affecting kids' ability to have access to their education, so that's the reason why we follow through on that stuff. Then there's the building administration section, that's where, incident reported to the building administrator, yes, if not, then why? It could possibly be that, you know, like I said, on that Friday, or one of the administrators was out, was unable to get to them, but yep, let them know, and then they talk about decision to initiate an investigation. Is there enough preliminary information there to say, yes, we need to investigate, or no, there isn't. There are examples where sometimes you just don't have enough information, it's a he-said, she-said type situation, two kids in a bathroom, two kids in a hallway. I have video, but I don't have audio, so I can't always hear what's being said. So sometimes there's just not enough at that point, but this is still documented, this is still data, this is still collected, and then we can always go back and say, man, this kid's name popped up two or three times, or this kid's made a report three or four times, so we can also look at that stuff as well. So that is the first part of it. Once there is a determination for an investigation, that's when you, again, look at video, talk to kids, anything and everything that you need to look through to try to help and support and find out the information that you can get from. And once all of that data is collected by who's ever doing the investigation, whether it's an administrator, counselor, or the HHB person, it is then brought to an administrator who would look at it and say, based on what I see here, yes, there is bullying, there is harassment. Based on what we have here, we can't say, can't prove that there's bullying or harassment, doesn't necessarily mean that there wasn't, but we can't say enough to say it fits the criteria that we have and what we need to do. So that is the part of the first reporting, and then as well as the investigation. Are there questions on that? All right, I got one more. Maybe. If lovely Vanna would come on over and help turn the letters. I forgot my orange today, I was not very happy with myself.
Well, Tony, as long as you don't ask me, you'll come here.
I'm gonna qualify my hair as semi-orange, in semi-haired. Yes. That's my last one. All right, thank you very much. I'm gonna hit an X. Hit an X. So now, we get to the point where we're gonna say, yes, we have determined that bullying or harassment has occurred. What do we do? There are always, like I said, there are always consequences for behavior, so there's always punishments that you can have. Punishments for infractions can vary based on what you find the infraction in, is in the level of the infraction. How much bullying, how much harassment, what it is, what level, I'll talk a little bit about that, so we have some clarity. Be always the intent is to stop the behavior and to educate kids, that's the whole point. So if we're looking at what you see here deals more with the stop and education than it does the consequence. So when we talk about these, if you get to the point where you say, yep, this is what's going on, we're talking about a first level bully or harassment, we're gonna sit down with the person who has been accused, and you find out that, yes, they are doing it, you've gone through all the procedures, you've contacted all the parents, you've let everybody know, everybody's had their opportunity to speak and give all their information. So then we sit down and then we talk and go over with each student what harassment is, what bullying is, so I'll just cover that a little bit in here. It talks about the definition of harassment, it talks about the definition of bullying, and then we talk about what we are, what we're doing for those first levels, as well as for, again, to stop the behavior and for education. So first offense, generally speaking, if the action is not severe in nature, the student will be provided with an explanation of what bullying and harassment is, be given a warning as to what will happen if the behavior continues, and may have a parent contacted, well, they will have a parent contacted. The student will sign the statement of bullying and harassment form, I'll show you that at the end, so this is a first level. All right, kiddo, we got the evidence, we know that it happened, this is what you're saying, this is what you're doing. They may have received an office detention, they may have received a lunch detention, et cetera, detention, even a suspension potentially for whatever the behavior was. But now we need to understand, here are all the things that bullying is, here are all the things that harassment is, and here are all the things that can occur from here on out, should you continue with this behavior. They go over this whole entire sheet, and then there's a signature page at the end, where they sign off and they say, I understand, yep, and I'll show you that. So that would be a first level. We always have the opportunity as administrators, that if we felt that the level is higher than the first level, and there's more to it, then you can always consider it, if the offense is considered by administration to be severe in nature, this step may be omitted, you can move to a second offense. In a second offense, parents will be notified, and the student will complete the harassment and bullying education program with the veteran general, with our professional coordinator, that includes developing a contract related to the offense. Admin will assign additional consequences as needed. So we have a person in the building whose specific job is to work with students for bullying and harassment. So there's a program that they do, it's done during the school day, they go down and they meet with this person, it's four or five sessions long, and it's very specific to what they were doing, whether it was bullying or harassment, and there's a program that they need to complete in order to finish and be able to move on and be done with that part of the training, and not receive further consequences. So if the kid does refuse, okay, now there's additional consequences for you refusing. They can refuse to sign, they can refuse to do the program, but there are gonna be additional consequences that go along with that. Third offense, a student is gonna be assigned out-of-school suspension, so now we've had somebody that is at a really high level, or has done it multiple times. All right, kiddo, what we're gonna do is, we're gonna give you five days of suspension, okay? You're gonna serve two of them, we're gonna hold three of those days, and you're going to be part of the RAP program, the CRJ, the
It's through Center for Resource.
The Center for Resource of Justice. And so we communicate with them, they come up with a plan for the kid to follow, whatever that is. They've done some creative stuff with kids before that's in the community, it's in, like, I've had kids go from the middle school to the elementary school, I have kids work in the community to do things in order to, you know, to make it right and to learn the lesson. And so they'll complete that program, and if they do that program with fidelity and complete it, those three other days of suspension that we have, they go away. You ain't gonna worry about it. But if you don't complete it, or you don't do it with fidelity, then those three days are gonna come back. When you start going beyond that, now you're talking about further offenses, you got out-of-school suspension, and a possible hearing with the superintendent, or the designated as well as, you know, possibly having to go before the school board, I think, one time, to try to do that with a student that we have in the school. Most of the levels fall within either one, two, or three. And of course, as always, retaliation, any student engaging in retaliation related to an allegation of harassment and bullying can be subject to additional consequences. The other thing I wanted to show you was that signature sheet, so this is what we have for lower-level offenses, first timers, you know, I, and then they write their name, have read the harassment and bullying procedures and understand what harassment and bullying are, what my consequences will be, should I choose to engage in this behavior in the future, and what my rights are as a victim, it's always important to let them know. You can, I've had students that were both the bully and the victim, it occurs. So they have the same rights, and we make sure that they understand that, because then they sign off on it. So that is understanding the procedures and policies that you have in the district, what our schools do when a kid comes in with a complaint. And again, not all complaints go to bullying and harassment, some do, and then what you do from those steps on. Any questions on those?
Just for the record, we don't just leave it to the middle schoolers to read it on their own either, we sit down with them and read it with them, just because, you know, for obvious reasons.
Typically, I am the person that does that, and I actually read everything to them, to make sure that they understand it, I ask them if they have questions. Some of the verbiage in here is a little beyond some of them, so sometimes I have to change things around, so they understand exactly what it means.
Compliments are crystal clear and ambiguous. Really well done, thank you.
You have a question?
Well, no, I don't have a question, if it may, I guess, it was really well done, and this is timely, and it need to be continually ran in the paper, in the newspaper, on cat TV, and I wish we could have had this prepared ready for the annual school board meeting, to represent this district and doing just what you just went through, because this is something that's not only touches this neighborhood, it's touching all the schools, a lot more, the northern school, and all across the nation. And this is a perfect execution of what should be happening to eliminate these things and the concerns of any student. Thank you. Welcome.
Yes, sir.
I liked all that, and I thought it was great. First time, what I heard was, the first offense you get is talking to. And then I brought in what's on the back of the program, and they didn't equal, like, on the back of the program, it says immediate ejection from the event, forfeiting of the event, resuming the game without fans, et cetera. It seemed this was a lot tougher, but when you spelled out all of that, it sounded a lot better.
Well, again, I think that we go back to, we can consequence anybody for anything, and I think we can do that, I mean, that's not a problem. You say something you shouldn't, you do something you shouldn't, it can be consequence. The important part is the education and making sure the behavior stops, that's what the intent is.
That program, though, that lines up with BPA's expectations as far as fans, coaches, and participants at a game. So that's sportsmanship and conduct, which can absolutely cross into what you're talking about. We've had incidents in the state of a lot where fans have made comments, or players have made comments to each other, and you very quickly turn into a harassment situation. But I just wanna, that may be a little bit of a different language, that's the statement that gets read at every contest, too, for everybody in attendance, how you behave yourself. So a kid could get ejected from a game, but then also face Mr. Lee on Monday morning because you threw a racial slur, or you were harassing a kid on a you were harassing a kid on a playing field or as a fan.
Right, because it's still school event.
Right.
That, that falls under the policy if it's on the.
So if our basketball kids are playing somewhere else and they make some kind of a comment like that, there's the procedure that they have to follow sports wise, which is, I think, the more of the immediate, hey, you're out, that's it. This is not an investigation, this is not a, when that gets taken care of, then that kid still has to come back and face the school justice part of it. Of saying, okay, this is what we're gonna do, this is what's gonna happen, here's the education, here's what's gonna take place. And they know that sports also has their own code of conduct for things that they will do for kids about how long they can play or not play or practice and all that kind of stuff. We don't have that piece that we leave to them. But their consequences could determine whether or not they play because kids being suspended at the middle school, if you're on a team, then there's a certain amount of time you will miss as an athlete.
I know the education piece is, as Tony alluded to a couple of times, it is probably the most important component to all this. And I know Mr. Colteen and I have talked some already with, you know, with the new uh, equity coordinator, um, Michael. And uh, you know, I know he's very um, interested, invested in looking at like proactive educational opportunities. You know, the education we're talking about is reactive, right? You know, it's like, hey, there was a need, now we're giving this education. But I, but we're having a lot of discussions around, how can we give like a, a tier one? How can we give education to everybody on this topic? Because it's, it's that important and it's that pervasive right now. So that's something that we're, we're uh, talking about a lot and I also have a couple of notes. It was timely in my principal's report for a little while from now about uh, October is a bullying prevention month. And we have some activities that we've been um, doing at the middle school proactively for bullying prevention month. I can, I can talk about that in my principal's report, when I go first tonight.
Sure.
Um, Scott, I just wanted to check to see if Scott had a question because he's muted, I'm assuming he put his hands up.
Can, can I ask a question on, that was really well done, I really appreciate that um, you guys prepared to pretend to prepare that. Um, the data like that you collect while you're doing that, is that something that our, that the equity coordinator will have, has access to readily in order to evaluate? The, this, I mean, this may be a question for like when he comes to join us, you know, but like, so he could talk about?
He is, he's working with, he is going to work with um, our data team for, for doing individual work for every school.
So they, so he'll be able to, so he has the ability or will be able to help monitor the type, the trends or that type of?
That'll be part of what? Yeah, yes.
It's interesting to see how the puzzles tick, like fit.
What, Scott?
Um, I just wanted to thank, echo what was already said and thank you for that, for that presentation and, you know, I think um, like what was already alluded to, it was a little jarring that the, initially, it was a little jarring that what was talked about for an athletic game was seemingly more, more strict than what we did, what we had written into the policy. But um, after, after hearing how you said it, you know, it's a privilege to be able to attend or play in a, in an athletic sporting event. And we also need to have there be a due, a due diligence and process for this stuff when it comes to the potential removal of a student from education and learning. Um, and so the way you have it spelled out makes, makes a ton of sense. And thank you, I mean, not saying we don't have, we won't have things that we wanna review with it, but this was certainly very helpful.
Thank you.
Seen many forms come in since the start of this year. I need to get the whole question out.
He has the data and uh, it, it speaks to uh, the need for the HHB coordinator uh, in that position. And I feel very grateful and happy to have her in that role, so, yeah.
I, I, and I can share some of this with you, uh, but I, I wanna be clear, like maybe these numbers, I'll talk a little bit about what they mean. And this is when I go back to, kids need to be educated. They don't, many times when we're doing investigations and we're talking with kids, they don't understand the power of the words and the things that they say. Because they're so used to how they speak outside of school, they're so used to how they speak online, they're so used to speaking how, how they speak at home or whatever with their friends. And that world and what they see in the media, what music they listen to, what movies they watch, whatever shows they do. And that coming into the world that we have in the middle school, it's not the same. And it's hard for many of them to understand that that crossover is not okay. That's the reason why they have to learn that stuff, that's the reason why that whole first part of it is you need to understand what it is these words mean. What it is you're saying and how you're affecting other people when you say that stuff. A lot, some of the examples I have, and I've done this many times where I've investigated with kids, where a kid comes in and makes a claim with another kid. He's, you know, he's calling, he's calling me a boogerhead and every time he calls me a boogerhead. And when I bring the other kid in and I say, oh, you know, calling him a boogerhead, he goes, yeah, that's how we talk to each other. You know, that's what we say to each other, that's how we mess with each other. And I said, well, it's making them feel, you know, ridiculed, humiliated, it's not making them feel good and we wanna make sure that, you know, everybody feels comfortable at school. And the kid will go, I didn't know it was bothering me, never told me that it did, he always smiled, I didn't know if it was bothering, if it's bothering him, I'll just stop doing it. So technically, that could be considered bullying because it is ridiculed, humiliated, intimidated, it happens over time, it happens on school grounds. But the education piece of the kid is, oh, I didn't even know it was bothering, he always laughs and smiles, what did you ever say things to the guy? So those pieces happen all the time, so just, and just because somebody's, you know, again, makes an accusation, um, you have to remember, when you're saying somebody's feeling intimidated, if I walk down the hallway, I can intimidate people just because of my size and going, yeah. That doesn't mean that's what my intent is. So a lot of times I have kids that are afraid of another kid. I've had examples where kids have told me, you know, I'm feeling bullied by this kid, I feel intimidated by him, and they've never had a conversation and they've never spoken to each other, they've never sat at the same table. It's just the mere presence of that kid, okay, that's not bullying, that's not what that kid's intent is. So that's the reason why you also have to do many of the investigations and you have to look into everything. Because you wanna make sure you're handling it appropriately. When it needs to be heavy handed, then it needs to be heavy handed. When it needs to be a little bit lighter and understanding and education, then that's what you need as well. So just looking at this year with the HHB coordinator, we've had uh, since our first day of school in August, all the way up until today, sixty-two complaints have been filed uh, for students who believe that they've been bullied or harassed, so sixty-two instances. Twenty have been determined to be unfounded or not bullying. Uh, and so again, it means may not be able to prove, might not be enough information, he said, she said. Twenty-one have been determined to be not bullying, but warranted education about bullying. Those examples I talked about, hey kiddo, what you're saying and what you're doing is making somebody feel uncomfortable. Let's do this first level, let's get the signature sheet now, let's talk about what this means, what this does, and what, what'll happen if it continues. Nine have been determined to be bullying, four have been determined to be harassment, and there's currently eight incidents that are under investigation right now.
There's a piece that I didn't hear about and I didn't know if there was anything that was done to address it.
Sure.
Um, and this might be coming with my therapist hat on, but when I think about all of the things I've heard tonight, it's all based from the perpetrator's standpoint and how to help them sort of not complete the same acts anymore. Is there anything that's done for the kids, especially if it's more in that two, three level, even, you know, even higher level where to help them? Sort of that had been subjected to this?
Something separate, but I, so one of the new roles that we have in the building within the last couple of years is uh, we have a, a full-time restorative practice coordinator. And then we also partner with CRJ as we talked about in the previous presentation. So a, a big part of what we do in a lot of these cases um, is, is uh, is uh, refer to a restorative practice coordinator or like a, a um, restorative intervention. Like a mediation. And so um, you know, both parties have to be agreeable to coming together for that um, on some level, otherwise that's not a productive conversation to be had. Um, and I would say ninety-five percent of the time, um, you know, maybe not always right at the onset, but you know, we can, we can get kids to a place where they're maybe even more, a higher percentage of that, most times, we can get kids to, you know, agreeable to get to a place where, hey, yeah, we can, we can sit down together, we can work through that, that mediation. Um, so that's something that we do that I think helps both, both parties move forward, the, you know, the perpetrator, but also the victim. Because, you know, then they walk away feeling like, hey, this had some resolution. This person who has, you know, been saying these hurtful, horrible things to me is, you know, coming to the table and we're having a productive conversation that we're gonna, you know, buy some mutual ground and we're, and we're, you know, we're not gonna have this happen anymore.
But I think also one of the things that uh, you're asking is, alright, so what do we do to support the victim?
Yes, that's exactly what I'm asking.
So we always make sure we have counselors that can work with the kid, we work with the parents, if there's a plan that we can do in order to support and help the kid and whatever they need, whether it's classrooms, whether it's transitions, whether it's um, you know, check-ins, weekly, daily, recs, lunch groups, lunch uh, counselors that do lunch buddy groups and all that kind of stuff, check-ins in the morning, check-ins in the afternoon, um, check-ins throughout the day, any high passes, any, you know, schedule changes. Again, making sure that the, the victim is the one supporter, that there's a, a bully and a victim, it's the bully schedule that gets changed, not the victim's. So there are ways that we try to support those uh, the students who've, who've made that complaint. Some of them just say, look, as long as they stop, I'm good. If they shut up and leave me alone, I'm good, but then there are others that need more than that support.
Well, and that's what I was talking about with those upper level.
Yeah, with those higher level ones and things like that, yeah.
I, I, I'm concerned with the whole mediation route because that implies that the victim, when you're trying to find common ground, it implies that the victim did something to deserve it and needs to find common ground with the offender. Um, so I'm hoping that whoever the victim is is getting options.
Well, I, I can tell you. They, they would never be asked coming together for one of those, this kind of, they don't want to do that.
And in fact, not where they're comfortable, some other sort of.
Right, and that's, and that's my sense, like, we would never ask them, you know, both, both parties have to be agreeable to that.
That mediation piece also, um, for a lot of those lower level ones, we have found have been extremely helpful.
The lower level ones, I think it's great, I think.
So when I've got, right, when I've got those kids, you know, when I've got those kids, you know, like the kid who said, I, it, it bothered me, I just didn't know it bothered him. Great, what's the deal, can I, I think, can I go talk to them, can I apologize to them? Yeah, as long as they wanna accept apology and they wanna talk, yeah. So I think for those level ones, yeah.
I think that, yeah, that makes a lot of sense for that.
We have protocols and stuff that we follow for the mediations too, so it's not just kinda like randomly sitting, sitting down and chatting, like we have protocols that we walk through.
There's actually written, things that our counselors go through, um, I just had a mediation with two kids and families and it's a straight line, we're gonna talk about this, we're gonna talk about this, I do feel, what do you wanna do, next steps, are we gonna support this, are we gonna support you? So there's things that you go through, but only ever as long as both parties are amenable to it. Never, um, if, if one says no, yep, we're good, we'll figure out a different way if we need to, for support.
I'm glad to hear that there are offerings for, for the victims too.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll just put in one more plug, in terms of uh, this whole thing, what makes it possible, it's a board responsibility to make sure to have good policies in place. So that started the whole background of this whole thing and it being consistent throughout the district that this, that boards sit down and put together with the state and legal and everybody to make sure that we have a good policy in place. And I want to make sure that everybody understands that policy is very important to make sure that all of these things be addressed along that particular line because of what we've done to put the things in place so that administrators can do their job and have the support of the board and legal behind them.
Um, okay, I thank you for that presentation, it was very helpful. I am going to move a meeting along, uh, we don't have any policies um, on the place, so we're gonna move on to the administrative report, sorry, the student representatives.
Um, so, we don't have, I mean, mostly just events that are coming up. Um, the drama, the high school drama club has the brother, the fall play, the Brothers Grapes Spectacular Thon performances. And those are on the ninth, tenth, and eleventh, and maybe the eighth. Um, that's undecided, but definitely the ninth, tenth, and eleventh, there will be performances of November, ninth, tenth, eleventh of November. Um, the boys' soccer team, the seat, the boys' varsity soccer team has their senior night tomorrow. Um, and the girls' soccer, varsity soccer team had their senior night last Friday and our football team has their senior night this coming Friday. Um, the boys' and girls' varsity teams are supposed to be in the playoffs, I believe, and those are happening at some point next week, but the brackets have not been announced yet. I believe those are coming out this weekend. Yeah?
I think you are correct.
Um, so I'm also a member of the student senate, so we have some events that we plan that are coming up such as um, the NEU bonfire that we like to do, it's the first week of November during the playoffs. I don't have an exact date yet, but that's going to be happening. Um, we have a food party starting November third for classes, uh, well, students will bring in um, like canned goods and it's like a competition thing and we might have a prize for whoever donates the most food. And we have our volleyball tournament, which is happening the fifteenth and sixteenth of November, where students and teachers can participate. Um, and uh, the student senate also uh, provides tutoring Wednesday after schools, which is starting soon, November. And something I have noticed, uh, I currently have the last lunch block in the school, like during the school day. And uh, I, I have the, you know, opportunity to pack my own lunch, fortunately, but I've noticed that during my lunch block and Mr. Payne's also heard some complaints, even during the third lunch block, I have this lunch block, that there's not a lot of food that's left during, like, the end of the day. Um, there's been times where I, like, I stand in line with my friends because they want me to, so we go up and by the time we make it to the lunch line, the lunch lady has said, we're out of food, like, you have to throw out. And that's been with like, the pizza, which always is gone. Um, even the hot lunches and the express lunches are always gone and most of the prepackaged lunches that are available are gone. And mostly what's left is whatever's left in the deli, what you can get. Um, and uh, Mr. Payne had said someone had also mentioned that there wasn't a lot of food and that was during the third block, uh, lunch block. Um, I don't know how that gets fixed, but it's something I've noticed. And we are also hoping to soon see the new furniture that's happening. I was also a part of the community where we had helped, like, pick the new furniture and design in the cafeteria because it was gonna be renovated. And we're hoping to soon see that. And I'm also part of National Art Society and we are having, what's it called?
Oh, we're donating uh, personal hygiene products to the rec center for them to make care packages with.
Yeah.
I'll have to respond to that.
Sounds like your question, I think you should go next.
I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, it's the first that I'm hearing of that, but uh, we certainly can have that discussion with the Abby group vendor that uh, but I'm interested to hear what Mr. Payne has to say in his report about it.
I should let Mr. Marquardt.
No, I think, I think, I think the segue, I think I, I think I'll fall back to.
Sorry, I thought you were going first, but.
I thought it was gonna be today, but I'll be, I'll be looking forward to next month.
So uh, in preparation of the school board meeting, uh, Tony and I do check in to make sure that we are not crossing lists as far as the report up to the board. So we had our conversation today, I did share uh, that I had received an actual email from a student uh, last week, so I, regarding lunch. Because there, there are four lunch blocks during the school day, I supervise the third one every day. Uh, and we had seen this pizza was gone and sometimes hot dish ran low. Um, so Maureen O'Neill, who I've worked with for years, uh, she's head of Abby Group, she and I exchanged emails, she's aware of it. And she has told me she is working with the high school uh, staff to make sure that it's properly staffed or uh, properly.
I'd be pretty cranky if there wasn't enough pizza for me personally.
Yeah, I feel it's had a.
But, but it's also a serious, you know, we, we don't want anybody denied uh, adequate lunch, you know, so, but again, it's why it's important that we have a student voice on uh, on this board, which we haven't always, so uh, and it's not always to bring up serious issues to adults, so I appreciate it. But I also know that, you know, I've worked with Maureen and the Abby Group, I believe they'll be very responsive to this.
It may have been supportive to the, the, the cafeteria has been painted and refurbished. It may have been support due to the, the cafeteria has been painted and refurbished and we're waiting for furniture. It's probably like all things, probably got a six-week lag to it to get in.
Yeah.
We anticipated soon.
I made a note to talk with our, on our, I'm sure the purchase works much earlier to see if we have an idea where they're coming from, when they may be coming.
Are there any other questions, um, before we move on to the administrator's report? Did you have any questions for our student representatives?
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate it.
Should I finish my report really quick?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody knows I still read the banner and paper form, uh, so I wanna congratulate the MAU Unified Soccer Team. Uh, athletes, their partners and coaches all traveled up to beautiful Norwich University. They participated in Unified Soccer, which is a, its format is different. It's a one-day tournament. Um, it's a, if you haven't gone to see a unified, uh, sport, uh, basketball will be back with us in February or March. It's gonna absolutely be the highlight of your week if you attend, so I encourage you to do that. Um, and I also wanna congratulate BBA. They were in the banner this week, which you can mark that down the day that I did that. Um, but they were recognized for their work in unified, uh, sports, which is, uh, a, a big deal for them. As proud of Royal Rutland and BBA have longstanding programs and we hope to join them soon as far as established programs or opportunities for all students. Um, we hosted, uh, Homecoming Dance on September thirtieth. Uh, we sold over five hundred tickets. We hosted five hundred students and their guests. I've been doing this for a really long time. It's the largest event I've ever been to. Uh, I wanna say thank you to all the staff and members of the bank, police department who came out to help provide supervision. We had a very nice evening. Uh, we actually hosted the dance in the gymnasium, uh, as we exceeded capacity in the cafeteria. So that's a really big dance. Um, this Friday, uh, we will be hosting along with our friends at UCS, a speaker by the name of Kevin Hines. He gives a presentation called Suicide, The Ripple Effect. We will be offering two sessions and morning for all students, grades nine through twelve. We however, recognize, uh, the seriousness of the topic. And so we've offered students an opt-out, which some families and students have taken advantage of. Uh, and we will not make this a mandatory presentation. We do have plans in place to support students, um, either opting out of the presentation or coming out of the, uh, presentation with questions. Uh, but we are looking forward to that. Uh, next Wednesday, October twenty-fifth is a half-day dismissal at eleven oh five. Um, I always say this for families, so if your kiddo tells you it's a half-day and you don't believe them, I'm telling you that it is. Uh, staff will be with us all day. We have professional learning opportunities. Um, and then one last thing, Thursday of next week, which is October twenty-sixth. Our friends at Southwest Tech, along with their, uh, partnership with, uh, Command, uh, are having a helicopter fly into campus. That camp, that helicopter will be arriving, um, at around eight o'clock in the morning. It will stay parked on the green in the front of the building till about eleven. Mr. Coopine and the team have been working on a safety plan, but it will impact the neighborhood in case folks are nervous as to why a large helicopter is landing on the front yard. Um, it will also mean closing, uh, entrances to the streets to provide a safe landing zone for the helicopter. So we apologize in advance for any inconvenience.
SPSU Safety Coordinator Victor Malani has been working at, in my direction to create a safety plan for all of that landing.
Yeah. It should be fun and barring the weather, we look forward to having a visit.
It's linked to what, like manufacturing.
It is.
Or something like that.
Yeah, so this is a partnership in manufacturing, a way of, you know, promoting interest in their program. So it should be a fun visit. Questions? Sure. We now have a full physical education staff? We do. You were gonna show me your curriculum sometime. Happy to do that. And financial literacy, we were talking about any progress on what's happening on that? Had a conversation with Ms. Boudreau and the Seneca, uh, because we also wanna talk about civics. So also, also then visited and how we might possibly offer those in the high school.
And then we talked about that would then go to the education.
Last one. Did you cover the floor during the dance? Uh, we did not. It's not necessary as it's been refurbished and as long as no one was out there in their high heels jumping up and down, we were okay. Good. I, we did clear that with, uh, the building crew before we did that. Cause I, I have in the past been in buildings where you had to cover the floor. So the floor seems to have, uh, survived unscathed. Five hundred kids though, jumping up and down, dancing to music I don't listen to.
I thought my two hundred kid dance on Friday was, I was like, wow, look it up.
Maybe somebody didn't wanna have any more dances up there.
Yeah, that's a different discussion for a different meeting.
I have a comment that I'd like to address to Mr. Payne and to the student representatives. Um, on behalf of the Better Betterington Corporation, I just really wanna thank the interact club who came out as well. Um, I think there were like six or seven. I don't know. I was a little busy. I think there was like six or seven. And somewhere between ten and fifteen, um, Chad Gordon broke the football team down and they picked things up and put them down. And I think that it, for, for the high school students to join a community function like that and volunteer, it, it was fabulous. And to my banner hat on now, we have the truck or treat event coming up. And I already have eighteen interact kids signed up to help us with that. So thank you. We really appreciate it and it, it's great for our community to see them out there. Okay.
All right, Chris. All right, compass time slot in the meeting. Here we go. So, uh, I'm gonna start off with something really positive. So, uh, this is the connection to, uh, Bullying Prevention Month, October's Bullying Prevention Month. As I stated before, uh, we do an annual event at the middle school called Mix It Up Day. And we coincided it with Unity Day, uh, and that day was today at the middle school. Uh, so, uh, staff, students wore orange. Mr. Lee and I missed the memo. I'm embarrassed about that, but we didn't miss the memo, but we, we forgot about the memo. So we didn't wear orange and that was, yeah, anyway. So, uh, the event is this though, the Mix It Up Day is a, that we do sixth, seventh and eighth grade during the lunch mods. So the counselors, uh, work hard with some of the other support staff, but the counselors really kinda steer it. Um, Goffe Poyntens also, uh, is very involved, the, that's a prevention coordinator. She really came at it with the lens through of Unity Day and organizing the, the Wear Orange campaign. And, um, we have students come into the caf on this day and there's a big bin of lifesavers and they're all different colors. And so there's little flags on all the different tables with colors of the flags that coincide with the lifesavers. So they come in, they grab a lifesaver and then, you know, we let them know that they get the, you know, that they need to sit at a table that has a flag that coincides with that color. So, you know, they get an orange lifesaver, they have to sit at the table with the orange flag. And the idea of this is that they're, they're stepping out of their comfort zone a little bit and they're sitting with some different people. And the idea is that they're, you know, they get to know some people that have, you know, are different than themselves and get to know some other people in the building. And that, you know, that kind of thing helps students, you know, learn, you know, teach tolerance, uh, get to know others, a little something about somebody that's different than you. And the idea is that that stop, you know, that, that helps. It doesn't stop. That helps prevent people from wanting to say hurtful things and, uh, you know, and bullying and harassing other students. So, um, that was an event that we did today. We, we do a bunch of, uh, you know, music in the caf during that time, there's less smiles. A lot of, you know, Mr. Payne, you probably remember when we, when we did these, you know, kids are, uh, you know, kinda dancing and having a good time. And it was a, a successful event. There's all these, um, little icebreaker activities that the counselors put on the different tables. Uh, things like, you know, would you rather, uh, you know, uh, you know, talk like Darth Vader or would you rather talk like Yoda? Or would you rather, you know, go back in time and meet your ancestors, ancestors? Or would you rather, uh, you know, fast forward to the future and meet your grandkids? And it's just like stuff for them that, like icebreakers for them to, you know, chat with others that they, they don't, they don't know so well at the table. Um, so that was a success today and it was just a really, you know, fun environment. I hung out in seventh and eighth grade lunch today, um, because Mrs. Austin's lunch does need to be covered at the moment. And, uh, and I know, I know she'd love to be there. Um, so that was great. A lot of kids wearing orange, staff wearing orange around the building. Um, it was a good atmosphere. It was a positive thing in the building. Uh, there was an opportunity that, uh, some high school students and middle school students both had the, uh, both had the chance to attend, uh, last, last week. On Thursday, we received an email, uh, from Senator Brian Campion. And he, uh, thought of us and invited, uh, you know, Mr. Payne and I to, uh, you know, to pass forward some names of some students that might be interested in going over to Bennington College at Capitol Building and having lunch with former US Senator Patrick Leahy. Um, so on Thursday, we did that. We had five middle schoolers and a staff member. I'm not sure how many high schoolers. We had eight high schoolers go over. Um, you know, they had just an opportunity to have a, a informal lunch with, uh, former Senator Leahy and his, uh, his wife. Um, they talked a little bit about politics, a little bit about history, a little bit about movies. They didn't know that former US Senator Patrick Leahy was in three of the Batman movies. And so he was very animated, uh, when he talked to the students about that. And, uh, I learned a little something new. I didn't realize that he was, and then I wanna go back and kinda watch some of those and that. And, um, but I, I, I wasn't there. I did speak directly to him. But my teacher who was there, uh, who I did this through student council. So it was my eighth grade student council advisor that went with the students. And he said that, uh, you know, he told the story to the students and they're on the edge of their seats about how he was in these movies and how he donated, um, the money that he got from that to a, a library in Mount Hillier that was close to his heart. So that was a pretty neat story. We got some pictures, uh, with him and, uh, they said he was just, he was just wonderful. And he was very, uh, you know, animated and talkative and, and just, they had a really good time. And I, um, my student council, eighth grade student council rep tells me that our middle school students, you know, represented us very well and asked some great questions. And I'm, I'm really proud of them for that.
We should give some thanks to Do4 too, because they were able to provide that bus extremely quickly for our needs and what we needed at that time. So, uh, thanks to them for being able to provide that transportation as quickly as we needed.
And Mrs. Boudreau and, uh, some folks here at Central Office who helped us with that. Because, you know, we, we were dating, we got this information days before the, you know, the trip. And, you know, we, we had to, you know, we're, you know, trip permissions and all that. So it was a great opportunity and thank you to everyone then for making it, made it happen. Um, a brief hiring update. I feel like I have one of these every board meeting. Um, we have, uh, we had, uh, I think four positions, uh, open still at the last meeting when I spoke to you, I gave my report. We have hired, uh, a secretary for the iconic office. That's with Mr. Lee. So that person is on boarded and, and there at the school. We are working with a candidate for academic tutor and mentor that I've, uh, you know, connected with at Galt through HR and we're working on trying to onboard them. And, uh, we do have some applicants and we're working through organizing interviews for library media specialists. And, uh, school counselor, uh, you know, uh, this continues to be the challenge, but we're, uh, we've reposted and we, uh, we're, you know, have a couple of leads that we're hoping to see applications in the pool soon. So, uh, we're, we're getting there with hiring. We're, we're down to, uh, you know, a couple of positions. Next, I think that is, oh, I would just say this, I'm sorry, I, this is, I'll leave this one out. Um, we started our clubs and activities at the middle school and Kelly Brooks is, uh, is my recovery coordinator is, uh, and also behavior interventions at the school. He helped me organize, uh, clubs and activities and, and, you know, uh, you know, communication with families and stuff around that. And we've really, uh, you know, we've been very purposeful about signing students up and giving them opportunities during the school day to sign up. And he had almost one hundred middle schoolers sign up for clubs and activities this year. I think that the number was one ninety-six. I'll get a, a more accurate count to see if, you know, that's how many people, you know, signed up with him, got a permission slip to bring home. Um, so yeah, it, that, that, that's a huge increase from New York. So then I'm proud to say that I can get some more updates on accurate numbers of students that are attending regularly. That's all I got for you.
Thank you. Any questions? I'll move on to the committee reports. Were there, did it, any committees meet with us? Is this the committee planning on?
Yeah, I spoke last week. I asked him about it. He said he is planning, I mean, we don't have a team. Any questions?
Right, um, Ben, I am not going to have a chair's report this evening. I, I really, because I feel like the presentation that we had was really important and we should dedicate that type of time to it. So, uh, the budget status report is posted, um, on the web and I have a motion to adjourn.
So. Okay.
One favor? Thank you.